Well, hello, everybody. I'm Jeff Kitner with North Dallas Chamber of Commerce. We are so pleased to have you all here today for our third candidate forum in this runoff cycle. We are excited to have the two candidates today for District Two. I'm going to turn it over now to Crystal Rotana, who is our moderator. Thanks very much, Crystal, for doing this.
Thank you so much, Jeff. Thanks to everyone for attending and welcome to Dallas City Council, District Two Runoff Candidate Forum. My name is Crystal Rotana, proud North Dallas Chamber Board Member, Director of Community Relations for Children's Health, and Mayor Pro Tem for the City of Farmers Branch. As you all have seen over the last few months, normally we would be hosting these forums in person, but due to COVID-19, we've shifted to offering candidate forums virtually. So thank you so much for your patience and hopefully we won't have any technical difficulties. As you all know, early voting has started, so if you've not yet voted, please be sure to do so as soon as possible. Before we get started, I did want to first recognize some of our co-sponsors. Of course, we have the North Dallas Chamber, whose mission is to make the city of Dallas the best place it can be to live, work, build a business, and raise a family. We have the Dallas Breakfast Group, whose mission is to increase participation by Dallas area businesses and civic leaders in local elections and local affairs. We have the Legal Women Voters, one of our longtime partners for our candidate series, a nonpartisan political organization who encourages informed and active participation in government. The Friends of Dallas Public Library, who works to promote the Dallas Public Library and its 30 branches, is vibrant learning institutions in our community, which, as you know, are hosting various voting sites. So please be sure to check their website for those. Faith Commons, which promotes public discourse rooted in the common values of many faiths. The Hotel Association of North Texas, one of the most active hotel associations in the country. And last but not least, Downtown Dallas, Inc., the principal advocate, champion, and steward of downtown. Now, before we get started, I did want to share a bit of background about District Two to kick us off. As you know, District Two spans very wide, vast geographic area as far north as Boffin Lake Park, including just areas north of West Northwest Highway, and as far east as Samuel Grand Park off East Grand and I-30. This area includes a number of longstanding Dallas institutions, including the Southwestern Medical District, home of UT Southwestern, Parkland Health and Hospital System, Children's Health, as well as Dallas Love Field Airport, just to name a few. With 3,458 votes cast in the race, both of these candidates raised about 64%. Now, we'll go ahead and get started. So thank you, Mr. Jesse Moreno and Ms. Sana Said, for joining us here today. And we will first start with the rules. As you've done, as we have done in the past, we're asking each candidate in ballot order a sequence of questions, and we will go back and forth after their first response. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. Following the opening statements, we'll have a series of moderated moderator and audience questions, and each candidate will have one minute to respond. Audience members, if you have any questions, please don't forget to post it in the Q and A. For any questions to be considered, it must be asked of all candidates. Now, we, as I mentioned, will be starting in candidate order. So we will start with Mr. Moreno to give his opening statement. Remember, you have two minutes, and once you hear my voice, that means your time is up. Mr. Moreno, we'll start with you.
Hi, Crystal. Thank you for being the moderator today and for the rest of the committee for hosting this morning, this afternoon. My name is Jesse Moreno, and I'm running for Dallas City Council, District Two. I'm running for Dallas City Council because I love the city of Dallas. Dallas has been good to me and my family, but more importantly, because I have the experience and the commitment that the residents of District Two deserve. I'm a third generation Dallasite. I'm a small business owner. I'm a husband. I'm a father. Dallas has been good to me and my family, like I said, and I want to be able to continue improving on those qualities of Dallas. Ever since I was a kid, I've wanted to serve, to make Dallas a better place. When I was on the Dallas Youth Commission as a teenager in high school, making policy decisions at a very early age, because I knew it was important to embrace my city rather than inheriting it as an adult. We don't have to have an elected position to make a difference in the city of Dallas. And that's why I've spent over 20 years, over half my lifetime, giving back to the residents of Dallas to making it a better place, whether that be as a vice chairman of the Dallas Park Board, improving our parks, quality of life for every resident throughout the district. That's why I've earned the support and endorsement from state and local leaders. But more importantly, that's why I have the support and the vote from community leaders, because I've seen firsthand my commitment and experience to lead Dallas and lead District Two in the right direction. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be being here. I look forward to answering questions and hopefully to be able to earn your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Ms. Said?
Thank you, Crystal. Happy to be here. Very proud to see you, and thank you for this opportunity. Well, thank you to the hosts and co-hosts for today. My name is Sana. I am a candidate for Dallas City Council, District Two. I'm a former news anchor and reporter here in Dallas. I was with Fox Four and CBS 11. I eventually left TV to become the spokesperson for the city of Dallas. So I helped manage the Ebola crisis, the July 7th shooting where several officers were killed. And you'll have to pardon me. I'm a bit under the weather, so please pardon my voice. I have a PhD in urban planning and public policy, and I'm also a member of Leadership Dallas Class of 2020. We are the longest class ever. We have still not graduated thanks to COVID. By day, I'm the executive vice president at a multifamily group where we own and operate properties throughout the state of Texas and Oklahoma. And by night, I run a nonprofit called Kenia International. So we do human rights documentaries and we also run a program called Fight Club, which is boxing, yoga, and counseling for women who are survivors of trauma here in Dallas. So I'm honored to be here. You know, we have the support of the Dallas Morning News, the Dallas Police and Fire Associations, Coalition for New Dallas, and the Apartment Association of Greater Dallas. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Said. And so you heard a little bit about our candidates. Now we'll go ahead and get started with our questions. And remember, don't forget to use the Q and A function to ensure that we try and get to your question as soon as possible, as soon as we conclude our moderated forum. So first, we'll go with Ms. Said with our first question. Ms. Said, Dallas continues to be a vibrant economic city with major companies like Uber and J. Kubs choosing to relocate here. While we have a great story, proactive economic development for the city of Dallas sometimes gets overlooked in favor of what's best for North Texas. What specific policy would you recommend to be implemented to generate proactive economic growth for our city?
Well, thank you for that question. You know, in this, in this district, it's so diverse because we have Love Field, we have parts of East Dallas, we have Deep Ellum, which is such a hub for economic activity for us here in the city. So when we talk about growing, you know, the tax base, what we really have to step back and look at is, is do we make doing business in Dallas easy and something that someone wants to do? I've been told over and over that, you know, people are frustrated with the city, with its bureaucracy, with its red tape, and they struggle to get things done in our city. The opportunity is there. The desire is there. I think right now it's about creating those, those, those roads of opportunities so that, that people have a desire to work here, a desire to, to set up shop here. Part of it is also transportation. We are seeing the investment in, in really filling out our bus system. We have D2 in the pipeline to create the subway coming through downtown underground. There, the transportation piece is a big part of our economic infrastructure. The other piece, of course, is, is our school districts working closely with our schools to ensure that we're, we're good partners and good stewards to DISD and to the superintendent, and then affordable housing, right? We, we are seeing some affordable housing developers go to every city around us but Dallas. And again, that goes back to how difficult we make it. So when it takes up to a year to get a permit through City Hall, that's not okay. That's not acceptable. So City Square and Metro Care, two of the largest providers of affordable housing in our city, say it's incredibly difficult to get things done.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Said. I appreciate your time. Mr. Moreno? And you're on mute, Mr. Moreno.
There we go. First, we have to recognize the fact that District Two is doing a phenomenal job. On average, we have three times more jobs in the city of, in District Two than the city of Dallas. We have 30% of the permits are coming through for economic development in the city of Dallas. We have major developments. Love Field, we have the medical district with the old Parkland. That's going to be such a huge opportunity for, for new development. And then we go south of 30, the Cedars, where there's so much opportunity, and that's where I really want to focus. District Two, the Northern part, where we're doing great things. But we have to bring jobs to the people. We have to make sure that people in, who live in affordable housing units are able to walk or take public transportation to their jobs. So we have to make sure that we're doing that. The second part is education, and that, that's so important to me. I'm a huge advocate of DISD, and that's why I've earned the support of former president of the DISD, Miguel Solis, and now current trustee, Joe Carrion, and Monica Libravo at the Dallas Community College, because we have to continue building a workforce. I have my niece who's graduating from Woodrow Wilson High School in a couple of weeks, and she's going to be, she's going to be leaving with an associate's degree, because that's what partnerships are like. We have to partner with DISD. We have to partner with workforce ready, working with our police department, our firefighters, building those types of programs in, whether that be welding, whether that be plumbers. We have to make sure that we are providing resources to citizens of Dallas. Again, District Two is doing a phenomenal job of bringing jobs. Having Uber and Deep Ellum, there's so much great things happening in District Two, and that's why I have those relationships with those organizations, and I want to continue building on that. The last piece that I do want to tie in-
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. I'm sorry. We were over a minute. I appreciate your time. All right, we'll go over to a second question. Just to remind you all, we have about a minute. So as soon as you hear my voice, that means your, your minute is, it's coming up. So I appreciate your, your patience with us on that. Our second question, and that will go to Mr. Moreno first. Dallas property taxes continue to go up. While Dallas County controls much of that, what initiatives do you think the city council and city manager can enact to help reduce the tax burden on our constituents? And you're on mute, Mr. Moreno.
Thank you. Housing is one of my top priorities, making sure especially that senior citizens who have paid off their mortgages are able to stay in their homes. Right now, they're paying higher property taxes than what they did on their mortgage. And so my, my goal is to make sure that we're able to keep them in their homes that we're working with home repair programs. So not only are they bringing their homes up to code, but they're also being able to apply that against their appraisal taxes. Although the city of Dallas, the council does not control the appraisal. We do control, we can control the rate. And so we have to make sure that we're keeping people in their homes and, you know, we're continuing to working with senior citizens and then also housing stuff. You know, we have the opportunity to work with projects like Dr. Oliver Garcia, who has come behind me and working with county land, city land, and making that available for developers. Because right now, the hardest thing is developing a project because of the land costs. It's so expensive to build in Dallas. If we're able to give them that leverage and that they're able to come in and lease property from the city or from the county, that's how we're going to do affordable housing.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Ms. Said?
Could you repeat the question, Crystal?
Sure. Dallas property taxes continue to go up. While Dallas County controls much of that, what initiatives do you think the city council and city manager can enact to help reduce the tax burden on our constituents?
So this is something that's actually come up in a lot of discussions with residents while we walk door to door, is they're so burdened by property taxes. And the reason that that's an issue for us is that the same way highways historically divided our communities, our property taxes have threatened to, to change the fabric of our community. We have history in Dallas. We have people who have been here for generations. So when someone who has held a home in this city for generations can no longer afford to, to live in their house anymore, that's, that's a problem, but also a very real reality for where we are today and with the amount of development happening. So there are some measures that we could potentially look at at the city level. As you mentioned, the county carries the bulk of that burden. But in the city, as Jesse mentioned, we can't address the tax burden, right? And so what that means is actually looking at, you know, our elderly. Can we freeze the property taxes for our elderly so that they are not burdened? Can we look at the, the families who are being gentrified, who are being pushed out of their communities and potentially look at freezing their tax rate as well? So that they're not burdened. So there's a family that lives near Love Field, and they're so overwhelmed by property taxes on a house that's paid off. They're on disability. The property taxes are somewhere around $10,000 a year. And in a lot of cases, for some of us who are on this call, that's more than what some of us pay in property taxes. So that's why this is a problem that absolutely needs attention, and it is something that the city council can address.
Thank you so much, Ms. Said. And we'll go ahead and get started with you with the next question. What are the biggest public safety issues in your district, and how do you plan to address those?
Well, you know, street racing has become the most famous term that we've heard in the last several months, right? It seems you go from one end of the district to the other end, honestly, throughout the city. And someone will tell you about how they're doing donuts and speed racing through their, their neighborhood. The issue right now with that is that it's endangering lives. It's putting people at risk, and that absolutely needs to be addressed. I do appreciate Chief Garcia's plan to put in speed bumps, because at the end of the day, people don't want a police officer on their, on every street corner either, right? So it's about, and as much as we hate speed bumps, it is kind of the new reality that we are facing right now because of the amount of speeding. Because it's not just our speed racers, it's actually just regular people who are driving through streets, and they're not paying attention to stop signs, and they're driving way too fast. Another issue we have is that we don't have adequate sidewalks in this district. So then there are parents walking with childrens on these streets, and they have no protection. The other thing is, you know, when you talk to C.C. Cox with the Resource Center, there's still a lot of concern about safety for the LGBTQ community. We've seen trans women who have been killed. We have seen the gay community attacked when they go out at night. So we definitely need to be, you know, to, to give attention there and continue to support there and address aggravated assault and crime itself.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Said. Mr. Moreno?
Yeah, street racing, stunt driving is the biggest issue, not only in District Two, but along the entire city of Dallas. We have it along the Swiss Avenue. We have it in Jubilee Park. It's not immune to, to one particular area. I am excited about the initiatives that Chief Garcia is bringing in, such as speed bumps. We also have to have the collaboration of other policing units, like our constables, like our marshals. And that's why I'm proud to have the support of a constable in our area, because he knows and understands that we can do site, traffic citations. We can issue those citations before they get out of hand. And the speed bumps are a great initiative. I really love the transparency that Chief Garcia is bringing in, releasing data and letting the residents know what they're doing. But technology, we have to address that. We, that's at our fingertips. We, we know where these, where these individuals are going to be. There, it's not, it's not a coincidence that, you know, you can have 200 people show up without some sort of social media. So we have to have a better intel on what's going on out there. And it's working collaboratively, collaboratively with our different policing units. And so, yes, policing in the, when it comes to sidewalks, I mean, we see, District Two has the most complete street projects in the entire city of Dallas. And along Cedar Springs, new crosswalks. We've put in so many crosswalks to improve the safety of walkability throughout the Cedar Springs area, and so, great.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. I appreciate your comments. We, we talked about safety. We talked about housing. We talked about affordability a little bit. I'm going to switch gears and we'll talk about budget. So parks, trails, libraries, cultural affairs are all citizen-facing departments whose budgets unfortunately are often first to get cut during the budgeting process. How will you balance the needs of these important city services, particularly compared to the needs of that, of public safety, it being 60% of our budget as well?
Parks, libraries are my number one go-to, especially during the pandemic. We had so many people utilizing our parks and trails, which was phenomenal. My family and I, we go to our neighborhood park almost on a daily basis. And so as a former park board member and as a former member of the Bond Task Committee of 2017 Bond, I helped secure millions and millions of dollars for District Two residents. Now, all our parks across the city of Dallas are improved. We put in aquatic master plan from free spray parks where kids could go in, and go in to state-of-the-art swim facilities for our, where our high school kids on swim teams are able to go and do swim meets. And so I would absolutely be a huge proponent of our quality of life aspects, especially parks, trails, and libraries. I mean, there's just no room to, to cut budgets there. You know, we, again, COVID's proved how important the parks are and how much people appreciate all the work we've done in the past eight years for our parks.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Ms. Said?
Well, when we talk about the city's budget, you know, I've, I've had to look at the line item budget while working at City Hall. And there are definitely areas that need to be protected, like our arts and culture, our parks and our trails. And there are places where we can cut that. That is an absolute. I do not think that our parks, that our libraries should be paying the price for that. I'll tell you, when I, we were going through COVID, going to Katy Trail daily was my release, and that's where I found my comfort, because it was a time to, to connect with nature. Another thing is you brought up, you know, police and fire taking up majority of the budget, more than half the budget. I, what I'm proposing is that the city reinstitutes Public Health Department. We had a Public Health Department. Once upon a time, we dissolved it as a city, and it's time to bring it back. If we do, we can apply for hundreds of millions in grants and properly build out mental, behavioral health, substance abuse resources that help us address homelessness and also take the burden off of police to police mental health and homelessness. And I think that's a different way that we can also diversify our budget so that we're not relying on police to address so many of our issues.
Thank you so much, Ms. Said. Both of you all mentioned Dallas ISD in your previous comments. And so we'll, we'll go ahead and talk a little bit about that. Although the city doesn't have oversight over DISD, a collaborative relationship between the city and DISD is very important. What do you view as the city's and your role relative to DISD and education in Dallas? And this goes to Ms. Said, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So when we, when I was at City Hall, the city manager at that time started meetings with Superintendent Hinojosa and his executive team. And so we would regularly meet to understand what DISD is working on and what the city is working on and where the opportunities were for collaboration, where the synergies could be found. And so the P-Tech program, that whole thing started while we were working together, which is fantastic. And I have a lot of faith in DISD. We have made incredible gains, and I'm so proud of all that they have accomplished in the past several years under this new leadership. So what I see as the city's role, I think it's partnerships. We currently have a, a major gap in education, a knowledge gap that has been created because of COVID, because so many students have fallen behind, because that same pressure to attend classes on Zoom was not happening in every household. So there are children that are, that are at least three years behind. It will take at least three years to close that gap. And so where I see the city being able to lean into that, it's creating some innovative programs through our libraries, is by partnering with the business community to create mentorship opportunities and, and actually leaning into our resources as a city and the business community to actually fill any gaps that DISD might have.
Thank you, Ms. Said. Mr. Moreno?
Absolutely. Partnerships are critical, even though we don't have oversight. In DISD, we can still do a lot. Before, I'm a, first of all, I'm a proud product of DISD, Woodrow Wilson High School graduate. We have such community spirit behind our local high school here in Dallas. And what I want to see is that happen in every part of, of the district, every part of Dallas. It, I mean, I've been part of, you know, in DISD and in the trenches since before I had kids, before. I mean, my, and my little girl's still not able to go to DISD, but as soon as she is, we're definitely going to be supporters, going to be enrolling her in DISD, because we really believe that our public schools deserve champions. And I'm the SPD, I'm president of our local elementary school, and I don't have a daughter, a daughter that attends that school, but it's so important. Other partnerships is by getting the trust of our, our local trustees. Dustin Marshall appointed me to the principal search committee to find the right principals to lead our schools. And it takes leadership. It takes people to come together, to, to work together. A few years ago, Mayor Pro Tem Madrono and I went out and recruited a city year to come to, to Dallas. And that's one of the great examples of how the city can actually partner with public schools in putting funding in programs like that, where city year comes in and they're able to advocate and, and help mentor our students. I was a director of Boys and Girls Club and making sure our kids have a safe place after school, making sure recreation centers are offering books in there.
Thank you so much. And it's a great segue to my next question, when we'll start with you, Mr. Moreno. You know, you both talked about your involvement within the city, and you all have been involved with the city for a number of years now. What are some of the projects you've worked on for the city, which are, which you are particularly proud of? Some things you can point to where you feel like you've made a difference to make the city a better place for, for our constituents. And we'll go ahead and start with you, Mr. Moreno.
Absolutely. Thank you. As we're approaching summer, my biggest, one of my biggest accomplishments is implementation of the Aquatics Master Plan, where we were, our, our swimming pools were just being outdated, where kids were going, families were going into our pool centers, and then we're spending 30, 40 minutes in our pools, because there wasn't really much to do other than go in and do a couple laps, soak your feet in. So we, we had to be creative and seeing what other cities were doing. And so what we did is we adopted our master plan, and we were able to implement spray parks that are free and open to the public, and they actually opened up this weekend, so I'm really excited about that. I know that so many young people take advantage of these places. They're a no cost, where someone can go in and take relief from the heat, all the way up to the state of art, state-of-the-art Samuel Grand Aquatics here that we opened about two years ago. And the Aquatic Master Plan is probably one of my examples that I would say I'm most proud of.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moreno. Ms. Said?
Thank you for that question. My lens is going to be very different from Jesse's, because as, as the director of the Public Information Office, I had to touch all the different areas of the city of Dallas. And so what, what I really saw as my area of expertise was making City Hall more transparent and building our communication network is actually something I teach police chiefs monthly through a course as well. And so we took, we had $11 million sitting in our PEG account, which is public education government funding. And so every time you pay your cable bill, there's a small fee that goes to the state, and then the state disperses that money to municipalities that have public access channels. So we, we as a city have four public access channels, and we had $11 million sitting in an account. So we took a couple of million out of that to actually equip City Hall with cameras everywhere so that every public meeting was broadcast. And so there, so when I first got to City Hall, if you wanted to see a meeting, like Dallas Animals Shelters, right? And the commissions, that you would actually have to submit an open records request and wait for a DVD to get a copy of that meeting. And, and what we were able to do is actually take money and put it into this, into technology so that you have on-demand access to meetings now, and you can see almost every public meeting at City Hall on demand, at your own time, at your own leisure. The other thing that we did is we spent a lot of time-
Thank you, Ms. Said. I appreciate your time. Thank you. I know there's a lot that we want to cover and only a little bit of time, so I appreciate your, your patience with us on that. Want to make sure to get as many questions as possible. For our next question, similar to the budget, as you know, we have some stimulus and relief funds that are coming to Dallas. And so what are some of your priorities for those funds that will be receiving from the federal government? And we'll start with Ms. Said.
Oh, the biggest thing for me is, is closing the gap, right? Because we were looking at a major budget shortfall because of COVID, and the federal relief is allowing us to not have to cut anything. So what I would really like to see is more innovative programs to partner with DISD to address the learning gap that we're seeing right now, to, to actually put the money toward, to, to support our nonprofits that are addressing the homeless crisis, which continues to spiral in the city, particularly after the COVID crisis started. So I would like to see extra funds, because I know a lot of those funds will already be dedicated to closing a gap, and that's okay, right? We know that that's going to need to happen. But anything that we have on top of that, I would like to see innovative program coming out of City Hall.
Thank you so much, Ms. Said. Mr. Moreno?
Crystal, would you mind repeating the question, please?
Sure. What are your priorities for any relief and stimulus, stimulus funds that Dallas receives from the federal government?
So, yeah, I mean, we have to, we're going to have a shortfall. Luckily, we, we have an amazing CFO who, in my opinion, under-projected some of our income that's going to be coming in. So we're, we're not going to be in hole as deep as what, what, once we thought. But I would like to see a lot of that extra funding going to making sure that we have equity across the city of Dallas and then addressing housing. We have so many people that are being evicted from their homes. So anything that we can help in that capacity to make sure that people are staying in their homes would be my priority.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moreno. So I'm going to shift gears a little bit. Once again, you know, we talked about the different areas that we have in District Two, from Deep Ellum to, to Love Field. Although improving, Dallas has a reputation as a city which is not always pedestrian and bicycle friendly, or to focus on prioritizing car mobility and infrastructure. What would you do to support increase in safe mobility for pedestrian, pedestrians and bicyclists, knowing that we have some of those needs, especially in District Two? Mr. Moreno, we'll start with you.
Perfect. As I mentioned earlier, District Two has the most bike lanes, the most complete street projects happen- Perfect. Um, as I mentioned earlier, District Two has the most bike lanes, the most complete street projects happening in the entire city of Dallas. So I would continue the work that I've done. Uh, connectivity is important with the Loop Trail, our friends, our partners. I was part of that project, making sure we're able to connect from one part of the district to the other. We have the Santa Fe Trail where people live in East Dallas who can utilize that to go to Deep Bellum where there's jobs. You wouldn't imagine how many kids, high school kids, middle school kids use the Santa Fe Trail to get from their home to the high school. Uh, but it's about connecting those dots. Now, we've done in, in a phenomenal job of putting that infrastructure down. But now we have to come back in and make sure that we're addressing public safety. And um Dallas is just such a car-centric city. Uh, we can do easy things like putting in crosswalks at major intersections uh and, and community intersections as well. And that's why just last year alone, I uh pushed to have a crosswalk connecting two of our parks together because we, we didn't, there wasn't a stop sign or a yield sign be, for, between Main Street and Gaston. That's just, you know, too long of a stretch for uh, for someone's safety. And um, so yes, uh, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Ms. Said, same question.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Um, although um improving Dallas has a reputation um as a city which is not always pedestrian and bicycle friendly or too focused on prioritizing car mobility and infrastructure. What would you do to support increase in safe mobility for pedestrians and bicyclists?
So part of that is, um, I think that we can work on separating bike traffic from car traffic. Uh, cyclists often feel that they're in danger even when they do ride their bicycle and bicycle lanes. They don't feel that there's enough protection there. Um, and that's a problem, but I'm sure Jesse could agree with me on this. By walking and walking and walking in this district, our sidewalks are a disaster. Um, you know, there are sidewalks that are coming apart, sidewalks that you absolutely cannot walk on. They are not ADA compliant. And then neighborhood after neighborhood doesn't even have sidewalks. So, you know, when we talk about mo- mobility, when we talk about, you know, how to make uh things more pedestrian friendly, we need to start by fixing our sidewalks in the communities and making sure that those are serving our communities adequately. Uh, the other thing that you're seeing is, you know, Zoak is coming up a lot. We're talking about um really reevaluating what the parking requirements are. What, what makes Dallas so special, what, why I think it's such a jewel, one of many reasons is because we're not like the suburbs. We're not like every other city that dedicates so much land to parking lots. And so I think that if we really reevaluate that and take, and really not, not force um businesses to have so much parking uh requirement that we can actually uh encourage that walkability and cycling and mobility that we want to see.
Thank you so much, Ms. Said. Now, I think um I'll have time for two more questions. Um, and then we will turn it over for questions from the audience. So please remember to um submit your questions if you have any for our candidates here today. Um, and for my last two, I'm kind of going to talk about what would you do um if you were elected. So um for my first question, um, if elected, how will you communicate and work with your constituents in addressing local and citywide issues? First, we'll start with Ms. Said.
How will work to address local and citywide issues? So your question is, what would I do differently?
I will you communicate and work with constituents in addressing, in addressing the issues you want to address while in office?
Well, I think that, you know, what we're, what, where we are at is a really great opportunity for change in our district. And, and I believe that I represent that change. And so when we, we talk about service to the community, I believe in servant leadership. It is not about maintaining a family legacy. It is simply about service to the community and passing the baton. So that means meeting people where they are. They're not always at a town hall meeting. They're not always going to be where you want them to be. And so that requires you going into the community, whether it's communicating by social media. However, people want to be communicated to, that is where we have to meet them. We cannot force them to continue to meet us where City Hall is because we lose so many people. As you know, our district has some of the lowest voter turnout in the entire city. I would be surprised if we see fifteen hundred people vote in this runoff election. Um, so because of that, you know, the, the, the interactions with the city, uh, we have an opportunity for inclusion for bringing up new leaders in the city and for representation. And that is where I'd like to, to put my energy.
Thank you so much, Ms. Said. Mr. Moreno?
Uh, thanks. So all you have to do is go back and look at my record. Uh, when a project in the parks comes up, city minimum is one public meeting to, you know, two hundred feet radius of the project. I always um held staff accountable to making sure we had multiple public meetings, making sure that we went out into the communities where the uh project's going to happen. I also believe that when we have over seventy percent uh Latino population in the city of Dallas, you have to be able to communicate with people. And so I bring um that, where I, I'm able to speak Spanish directly to the constituents of District Two. I think that's very important that they have someone who they can uh relate to and, and speak to. And I have said this from, from day one on the trail, you know, I uh will continue being out in the community. I give my cell number out to everyone. I put it on all my literature because accountability and uh communication is key. My cell number, if anyone ever wants to reach me, is two one four six eight two one six three three.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moreno. And for um my last question, um, before we start over to uh turn over to the audience questions. Um, Mr. Moreno, do you have a plan for what your first hundred days of City Hall will look like and what will that be?
Yeah, uh, first hundred days, you know, uh, yes, we go in and uh we have one meeting and then we have recess. Uh, but the, the truth of the matter is that being a city council member is a full-time job and I will treat it as such. Um, and putting in a strong team is, is the first uh thing that we have to put in. Meeting with uh the city managers, meeting with the uh department heads of every uh, every department within City Hall, whether that be sanitation or economic development. Um, and so it's my priority to make sure I make those dots um on day one.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Ms. Said?
Well, Crystal, as you know, from being at City Hall, City Hall is a monstrosity and it takes a lot to get things done. But I do believe that when new blood comes in, the first six months is when you have the most opportunity to create the most change. So the three big priorities that I've highlighted for our campaign, number one is implementing a trauma-informed public safety model. This is to address racial healing in our community and also trauma. What does that mean? We address re-traumatization in the community, particularly of youth, and we address secondary trauma for police and fire, something that both police and fires say they desperately need. The second piece is bringing back a Department of Public Health. This what allows to address mental behavioral health and substance abuse so we can adequately address homelessness and potentially create interesting innovative programming that could address access and affordability in our community. It also, as I mentioned before, helps police focus on policing and addressing criminal activity. The third pieces are permitting process. It should not take a year to get a permit through City Hall. That is not acceptable. So actually reinventing that piece, seeing if there are any technology solutions that can speed that up and make our city more user-friendly, period. So those are the, the three big issues that I would like to focus on my first one hundred days.
Thank you so much, Ms. Said. Well, thank you all so much for indulging us with some moderator questions. Now, we're going to go ahead and turn it over to our audience questions. And so um, please allow me a, a second or two to go through those. And I think we have our first one. And so again, if you have any questions, please feel free to use the Q and A function or the chat function. So our first question is about our convention center. What are your thoughts for the convention center? Hospitality is the largest employer and took a hard hit due to COVID. The economic dollars that come to our city are tremendous. Will the council support an expansion of the center along with maybe another hotel? Um, create more walkability opportunities and bring more business to this area? Um, first, we'll start with Ms. Said.
Yes, I believe that question is from Jennifer, if I read that right.
Yes.
And this is a great question because you have City Hall right there by the convention center as well. And there are hardly any resources as far as uh, you know, you could easily put in dry cleaning. Um, you could put in a little restaurant. You can create so much there because there are other big hubs around that area that would feed into it and help keep that area alive even when there's not a major convention. So yes, I do believe in equipping our convention center with resources, uh, more opportunities to stay there, have fun, expand, bring people into our city. Uh, this is an area that is, has a lot of opportunity, a lot of rich opportunity, and I would like to see that come to fruition. Absolutely.
Thank you so much, Ms. Said. Mr. Moreno?
No, well, as someone, as a, a small business owner in the hospitality industry, I can tell you, our industry has been hit very hard. And I want to, the last thing I want to see is someone driving down Main Street, someone driving down uh Henderson and Seaboard it up storefronts, Seaboard it up. Uh, where entrepreneurs have worked uh an entire lifetime to be able to build something for the city of Dallas to be closed. We absolutely have to be there to assist them, to help them uh get over this uh, this little hurdle. Uh, but I'm in full support of our uh, uh, making sure Visit Dallas continues to be able to, to bring more jobs with the creation of the um new speed train uh coming into the Cedars and making sure people are connected uh to the convention center. As, as we all know, the convention center is currently going under a master plan right now uh in incorporating a lot of public art, which I think is, is fabulous. And so, yes, I mean, I, I have my commitment to making sure that the convention center is successful along with the uh Convention Hotel.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moreno. Um, for our next question, what will, excuse me, what will you do to push for our city to be greener? Now, we talked a little bit about this with cycling, but what are some of the things that you would um incorporate? Mr. Moreno, we'll start with you.
Uh, so thank you for the question. So under my uh tenureship and leadership on the park board, we advocated and were successful in doing a land acquisition uh for new green spaces throughout the city of Dallas, making sure that every resident was, is within a ten-minute walk from a public green space. And so whether, so now uh what was implemented was a developer has two choices. They can pay into a uh, into a fund that will be given to the city of Dallas and we can decide where that green space should be. Or the developer has to put green space within the footprint. So making, and that has to be public and uh accessible to uh, to the um, to residents of District Two. I also advocated for a no-smoking ban in the city of Dallas. Um, I also was instrumental in um phasing out uh what we call blue poisoning, which is a weed killer in our parks, making sure that they're safe for the environment. Dallas is the fastest growing heat island in the entire country. We have to build green and we have to incentivize developers to build uh in a better way and in a, uh, that's better for the environment.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moreno. Ms. Said?
Well, Jesse actually brought up a lot of great points. And another piece that I would add to some of the policies that have already put in, been put in place to encourage green space, particularly with new development, um, is when Downtown Dallas Inc. did their luncheon back in the time before COVID. Um, they had a keynote speaker who was from Toronto and she talked about some of the, so, some of the different ways that you can actually um kind of counteract all the concrete that creates all the heat. And we know that we have a ton of concrete here. As much as we try to push uh for greenery here, we have so much concrete. And so by even uh using some of our rooftops and focusing on, on making those green as well, I think that there are different ways that we can actually utilize some of our spaces in our buildings and our homes to contribute to that in addition to some of the policies the city has in place.
Thank you so much, Ms. Said. Um, for our next audience, audience question. Um, with the East Quarter poised to attract more people and foot traffic, what will you do to regulate areas such as South Caesar Chavez Boulevard and others in this area? And we talked a little bit about cycling, but what are some other things that you would do to help regulate this? As too many motorists still consider uh this still to be Highway Seventy-Five? And we'll start with Ms. Said.
Oh, I never muted myself, sorry. Um, you heard my reaction to that. So I, I believe, um, if I have this right, Mr. Habib is someone I met while block walking and he lives at the corner of Caesar Chavez in Canton, if I have this right, um, because I can't forget that name. So um, I live on Caesar Chavez and you probably heard a car muffler at the beginning of this Zoom call. And it is, it is like a, a racing strip down here, depending on the time of day. So specifically with this question in regards to East Quarter and the new development and people basically look at this as an on-ramp to a highway. It is not. Um, some of the signage that is on Caesar Chavez actually encourages people to speed up. And I don't believe that that was intentionally done, but there is signage that says that, you know, this highway and that highway is coming up ahead. And it's not coming up for like another, maybe a mile. And so the signage is a little bit, um, it's, it's not communicating properly to our drivers about how, um, how close in proximity they are to the highway and the on-ramp. And so what it's done is people start speeding up as soon as they see that sign and start hitting the, the pedal so that they can get ready to go on the highway. So I think that signage is a big part of that. Uh, people are, uh, often, sometimes, they do not, I say often, sometimes. Often, sometimes they do not feel safe walking down the street because of the amount of traffic ha- that it, that's here and the amount of speeding that happens here because of our signage.
Thank you, Ms. Said. Mr. Moreno, same question.
All right. I think it's all by design. Uh, we need wider sidewalks. When we're designing these boulevards, we have to uh reduce the number of lanes uh with complete street projects like we've seen time and time again in District Two. Um, adding heavy landscaping trees. We know that when there is wider sidewalks, more trees, people just naturally slow down. And so not only does it slow down traffic, it makes for more inviting, more welcoming uh area. And so uh, that's what, that's what I'll continue to lead on, in making sure that our sidewalks are, are wider. We're, and we're bringing in uh storefronts are opening up to those sidewalks rather than, than having those setbacks where it's just a building wall. Where we build in more patios, more uh restaurant uh patios so that people are, are welcome on, on the sidewalks.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moreno and Ms. Said. Now, we're going to go um switch from audience questions to do one of my favorite parts of our candidate forums, which is our lightning round question. So these are uh designed to be ten seconds or less, short and sweet answers. Um, and so first, um, we're going to go back and forth, start with Mr. Moreno. What is your favorite park in District Two?
Uh, Riverside. It's our, that is our central park of the city of Dallas.
Thank you so much. I, I am a fan of Riverside as well, I will say. Ms. Said, same question. Favorite park in District Two?
I love Riverside. That's usually, when I am on Katy Trail, I usually step off just to take a, a detour through there.
Perfect. Um, Ms. Said, next, next lightning round question. Favorite restaurant in District Two?
Oh, I'm a foodie. Uh, this is a tough question. Favorite restaurant? Um, I haven't had a kitchen in four months. Um, and so we, I've been eating at Farmer's Market almost every day and Rex's has become the spot where I usually go have dinner and still love the food every day.
Love it. Mr. Moreno, favorite restaurant in District Two?
Uh, this one's a tough, we're, we're lucky to, to live in, in uh, not only the state of Dallas, where we have so many great restaurants um, and so many new places that are opening up all the time. Uh, gosh, my favorite restaurant is going to be, I'm going to be biased and I'm going to go with uh my sister's restaurant at the Farmer's Market, uh, the Meadow Meadow.
So many, I agree, so many great restaurants in District Two. Um, so I'm going to go, this is a little, little shift. Um, setting aside of what you will do if elected, do you think city council position should be full-time or part-time? Mr. Moreno?
Without a question, full-time. I tell people it's like having three jobs at once.
Ms. Said?
So um, so I, I'm a little conflicted on this one. Um, I think the way the city council currently sits with fourteen single-member districts and one at-large seat, it makes more sense to be part-time.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Uh, back to, back to some of the fun ones. What's your favorite city in the world besides Dallas? Ms. Said?
Oh my gosh, um, I love to travel, so this is really, really difficult. But maybe uh the, the city that my mom is from, which is Karachi, Pakistan.
Mr. Moreno, same question. What's your favorite city in the world besides Dallas?
In the world, uh, I'm going to go with Mexico City.
Mexico City, that's a good one. All right, next question. Um, name an individual endorsement from someone who lives in your district you are particularly proud of. Mr. Moreno?
I'm going to have to go with, with my dad, Jesse Moreno Senior, who showed me and uh to be a great leader, to give back to my community and uh family of generation of, of just giving back to the city of Dallas. So I'm, my dad.
Ms. Said, same question.
Oh, that's such a great one, Jesse. Sadly, my parents are in Fort Worth, but I would have to say Elaine Campbell because we come from two very different perspectives on policing and trauma. But because she understands so much about trauma, she's been a huge champion for me in addressing trauma as a pandemic in our city.
All right, for our next question. So a couple of weeks ago, here at the chamber, we heard from um OAC's Jennifer Scripps. And she talked about arts and culture. What's your favorite art or culture venue in the city? Ms. Said?
That favorite arts or culture, arts and culture venue in the city? Oh man, you are giving a lot of really tough ones. Um, I guess I would say maybe the Meyerson. That's one of my favorite places. It's just so opulent and stunning when you walk in there and we've done so many memorable events there.
Yes, we're, we're lucky in Dallas. We have a lot of very amazing arts and culture venues. So, Mr. Moreno, this will be a tough one for you too. What's one of your favorites?
Old City Park, Heritage Park. It has such a rich history of Dallas. It, it, it tells the story of Dallas, uh, but it's also free and open to the public. And I got married. but it's also free and open to the public. And I got married there. My wife and I got married.
Special place in your heart. And so I don't think we have any more audience questions. I'm going to ask one last question. And this is one of my favorite questions that I like to ask. What was the last book you read? Mr. Moreno, we'll start with you.
Our last books, I just took my daughter when the libraries opened back up a week ago. And she grabbed about 15 books, couldn't just get one. And Santa Maria, my aunt is the book that we picked up.
I love it. Ms. Said, same question. What is the last book you read?
Passed by Isabel Wilkerson.
I love that. We'll have to, you'll have to put those books in the chat and let us know how, how you like them. Well, thank you all so much. We're going to go ahead and conclude our forum with giving our candidates just one minute to conclude. And we'll go ahead and start with Ms. Said.
Well, thank you, Crystal, for such a wonderful forum. It's, I believe, our only forum for this election. And so thank you so much for hosting this. Thank you to all of our co-hosts. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you to Jessie. I will tell you that running for this seat has been not only exhausting, but one of the best journeys of my life. Having an opportunity to go inside people's homes, learn about what they care about most, has been just heartwarming. And it's helped me have a greater appreciation for the city and the people who live here. I would be honored to have your vote. I believe that I am the candidate that stands for change, that is here to fight for City Hall, working with a sense of urgency and getting things done. I have the support of the Dallas Morning News, the Dallas Police and Fire Associations, Coalition for a New Dallas, Apartment Association for, for Greater Dallas. And yeah, I'd be honored to have your vote.
Looks like we might have lost our good friend Kristal. So Jessie, why don't you go ahead and take it from here?
Thanks, Ken. Again, thank you all for organizing this. It has definitely been very energizing and exciting to be on the campaign trail, meeting so many new faces, but also running into so many people, families that we've worked with for the past 20 years in the city of Dallas. And I'm running again because I have the experience and the commitment that the residents of District 2 deserve. I've earned the endorsement from countless elected state and local leaders. I have also been fortunate enough to get the support and the vote from my former opponents in the race, Raja Jonas Parks and Mike Fetzer as well. And so I thank them for giving me their vote and giving me the trust to, to lead the city of Dallas. I was able to come in first place in the general election. And I look forward to working with the opponents that were in the, in the general election to move Dallas forward. Again, District 2 residents deserve nothing more than someone who is there to represent them, someone who has the experience, someone who has had their back, someone who does not need an elected position to have made a difference. And I will continue giving back and serving the city of Dallas just the way I have for the past 20 years. I hope to.
Right. Well, I'm not sure if Kristal's back. Crystal, are you back?
Yes.
You might want to say farewell.
The, the beauty of Zoom, let me tell you. I had some, some fun with this throughout the years with the mute button and everything. So thank you so much. I apologize for the difficulties. It's an honor to moderate the panel here today as member of the chamber, but also just an advocate for the city of Dallas. So best of luck to you both. And thank you so much for joining us. And Ken, I'll turn it back over to you to close us out.
Thank you so much, Kristal. And thank you, Crystal, for, from Children's, Children's Health. She is so engaged in the community in so many different ways, as she told everyone at the beginning. And we can't thank her enough for moderating today's panel. We also can't thank two really high-quality candidates for this role, both Sana and Jessie, for stepping up and their willingness to serve the city of Dallas in these very critically important roles, which then translates into, we need to get out the vote. So please, early voting has started and it will continue through June 1st. So please, please vote. And of course, the actual election day is June 5th. So look forward to hearing from each of you again soon. But thank you again for your time today. I also want to take a minute to just simply thank our cosponsors today. Obviously, the North Dallas Chamber of Commerce, but also the League of Women Voters, the Dallas Breakfast Group, the Friends of Dallas Public Libraries, the Hotel Association of North Texas and Faith Commons. Oh, and I'm sorry, and Downtown Dallas Inc. So thank you so much for your sponsorship of today's event. I just want to remind everyone that tomorrow, we will be holding another candidate runoff forum for District 14. And it'll be tomorrow at 2:00 PM. The same sponsors will be involved in that. So please, please join us for that if you can make it. So again, thank you very much, Kristal. Thank you very much for your moderating and we'll look forward to seeing you tomorrow, hopefully in the same format. And enjoy your day. Thank you.